Evening, everybody, and welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the Waterville City Council. There are agendas available on the table near the entrance or online at the city's website. Consent agenda items are routine items which are voted on in one motion and vote. Unfinished business or new business items are voted on separately. Councillors will be given the opportunity for questions or comments, followed by citizens, who must speak at the podium and identify themselves. Citizens will be allowed to speak one time per agenda item for up to three minutes. Citizens who do wish to speak on a topic that does not appear on tonight's agenda will have the opportunity to do so during the public comment section of the agenda for up to three minutes. All right, let's kick us off tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance. Sorry, I apologize. Strike that. Everybody can sit. But this is good, everybody wants to talk, this is kind of fun. First, we are going to open this up with a public hearing with regard to the King Street Department Affordable Housing Development and Tax Increment Financing District. We have our TIF attorney, Phil, on the line. Phil, if you want to just give us a quick kickoff to, you know, what this is and what we're, you know, what we're going to talk about tonight. Maybe not. Phil, can you hear us?
That's enough.
Way back the guy.
Why?
Because he can see you.
Oh, can you, can you hear? Phil? But he doesn't know where I'm looking at, so like, at the end of the day, like...
You know sign language.
I don't know sign language.
Give me a P.
Go.
He just has his computer on.
He's wide open, like, he could speak right now, we could, should be able to hear him.
Sure, but he has his computer volume off on his computer, he cannot hear us.
Oh, there we go.
There you go.
Phil, can you hear us now? Phil?
Can you chat message him?
No. We don't have chat function.
Hello? There it is.
Okay, hey, Phil, can you hear us?
No, I can't.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
I can. I gave you an awesome opening, I'm not going to do it again, but trust me, it was fantastic.
Okay, I did not read your lips, so thank you.
No, all you, kick us, if you want to kick us off tonight with the, with the King Field Project, that'd be great.
Sure. So, yeah, thanks for having me. Just so people who don't know me, I'm Phil Soss here, I'm the Chair of the Municipal Department here at Bernstein Sher, and I represent the city on TIF matters. So the city was approached by Kennebec Valley Community Action Program for affordable housing project on King Street. What the entity is proposing, a 37-unit workforce apartment building that will consist of a series of, or a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom units, to be known as the King Street Apartments, on 52 King Street. The developers have asked, it's a 2.96-acre area of land that's currently occupied by two residential condemned buildings, a number of outbuildings that would be demolished, I understand. This is a program that they're working with Main Housing for, so the way the Affordable Housing, TIF programs work is that obviously it has a benefit to the city to incentivize this type of development, and the city also benefits by receiving tax shift benefits, which, you know, some of you may be familiar with that, based on your existing TIFs. But that's one of the benefits to municipalities. On the other side, what the developers typically will ask for to help with their development is what we call a credit enhancement agreement, which is a partial reimbursement of the taxes that are paid on the increased assessed value of the project. So the way to think about that is, in other words, the amount of value, we have assessed value that this property will go up, that is captured, and the taxes paid on that will be partially paid back to the developer. And the city has a number of these in place, so you're likely familiar with that concept. What they've asked for here is a 75% reimbursement on that increase, on taxes on the increased assessed value over 25 years to help with the project. It's been reviewed, the documents you have in front of you have been reviewed by the developer and Main Housing's general counsel, because we like to always get their comments before going through the process. It would start next year, and it would be a 30-year period, the TIF itself would be 30-year period, but the reimbursement period is only for 25 years. So the remaining five years at the end of the TIF, those tax, the full 100% of the tax revenues on the increased assessed value would go to the city's TIF fund. The last thing I'll say is, is that the city can use its TIF revenues for these affordable housing TIFs on certain approved project costs, and you'll see in the development program in your packet, a list of some costs that the city has helped pull together. So you can use it for professional costs related to the program itself, various administrative costs, so you can help pay for part of your municipal employees' time as it relates to administering the CEA, and also you've designated some of these funds to go into a housing development revolving loan and investment fund, to help fund the city's permanent housing development revolving loan and development fund. So that's a very brief overview, happy to answer any questions. I'm not sure if the developers here too, but I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you very much, Phil, I appreciate that. Okay, public hearing, anyone from the public wish to speak with regard to this particular Anyone online, Patty, aside from Phil? Okay. All right, well, with that, we will close the public hearing. Thank you, Phil.
You're welcome.
All right.
And should I, would you like me to stay until the order? If you have any questions or...
I think, yeah, that would be fantastic, I appreciate that, thank you.
I will, yep.
Okay, great. Moving on now, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Any disclosure of conflict of interest from any of the councillors for any of the votes that we will take tonight? Seeing none, moving on. Presentation, that is, we are going to postpone that, Christina is not feeling well this evening, so we'll move right into the city manager report.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, we've established, as I've talked about previously, an internal staff grants committee. So the purpose of this group is to, going to be to better coordinate, grant workflow, research and writing, and put ourselves in the best possible position to go after opportunities for Waterville. There are a lot of grant opportunities out there, and we want to be as proactive as we can in going after some of these opportunities. So also just note that Joe, who's here with us, has taken over our pursuit of the EDA Public Works Grant for infrastructure improvements, that's the access road at Quarry Road. This is going to be a big one for us, we're trying to put together a compelling case for economic impact, so that's one right now that we're working on. We're also going to be working on a number of main office of tourism grants, three different grants, there's a deadline in a couple weeks, we'll have some great projects in mind for those. So, general point is, and I said this at our staff meeting today with our department and group, any potential grant opportunities that they have identified out there that are of interest, that they want further investigation or research or writing assistance with, this committee is going to be sort of the central clearinghouse for those opportunities. So, it's a good group, I'm really optimistic about us being much more proactive in going after these grant opportunities, and I hope to see some, some good results in the coming year, so we're excited about that. We've had some great ribbon-cutting events the last couple of weeks. First of all, the Appleton Street redesign, on October 18th, we had a great turnout, a great event, to really commemorate this project that the city did, another downtown vision project, so thank you to all those who turned out for that. I want to thank the library also for their cooperation with the event there, so thank you to all there. We did a ribbon-cutting at a coffee house on Main Street on October 30th, a really great new business there, some unique products, kind of a unique space, if you haven't been in, please check them out. On October 24th, some of you were here for this one, we had the ribbon-cutting at Quarry Road for the rope tow building, really great event, big turnout, another milestone for the Quarry Road venue, which is just awesome for the city, so thank you to all that came out for that. And just upcoming, a new downtown business, Pickles Potions, this Friday, we'll be having a ribbon-cutting over there for their grand opening. My next city manager's open office hours will be November 25th, 3 to 5, we're still looking for a location, but really encouraging all Waterville residents, local business owners to come out and attend, to share their thoughts, views, complaints, or anything else they'd like to share. Just another piece on the community engagement, happy to announce I'm also joining the board of the Waterville Historical Society and Cultural Center, Reddington House, some really great stuff happening over there, so happy to get involved. Moving on to some other recent events, we had our Nightmare on Main Street Halloween event on October 26th, it was a spectacular success, I think most of you were out for that one, really great event for the downtown, for our first try at that event, it was a great turnout, great success. I want to thank, on city staff, Michael Hall in particular, who worked pretty hard on that, and then obviously our partners at the Chamber, the Downtown Group, many others, but a really great event for Waterville, it's going to be bigger and better next year, it's going to be coming back, so we were really happy about that. We hosted the Grow Smart Main Conference in Waterville this year on October 21st, they had a record attendance, it was at the Opera House, a number of city staff did attend, so we're happy to have them, and they should be coming back for one more year, hopefully in 2025. Also, we had our week-long hosting of the SUCA on Castangue Square, also in late October, that was a great success, really, really neat, had a lot of positive energy and comments about it, a number of us ate lunch in it a few times, there was some really great just activities surrounding it, so thank you to Beth Israel, Waterville Creates, and city staff, particularly Public Works, who put up the SUCA, for making this a wonderful community event and display here in Waterville. And again, one of the first of its kind municipal hosted SUCA in the United States, I'm told, so, great stuff. I also just want to note, this is, this is very early, but I did want to put it out there, that we have been talking, just internally among city staff, in light of the Chamber discontinuing the Taste of Waterville event, we are discussing, potentially trying to bring it back under the city's umbrella. So, no, no promises yet, but we're, we're talking about it, kind of having some initial conversations. We think it would be interesting to bring it back to Main Street.
Taste of Waterville.
Taste of Waterville, yes. We think it would be interesting to try to bring it back to Main Street, so some initial discussions, no promises, but we are, we are definitely thinking about this, and would love to bring it back under the city's umbrella next year, and bring it back downtown. So, just an update there, and I'll have more to say later. Here's some good news, so the Teconic Bridge will be fully closed now, it's all traffic, starting on December 16th, 2024, running until June 20th, 2025, so if you go back and forth between Waterville and Winslow, you have to go around, so...
Two Cent Bridge.
Or walk across the Two Cent Bridge, that's right. In case you didn't know, we had an election yesterday. I want to thank Patty, our city clerk, all of our election workers, everyone who worked this election, it was a big one, another successful year of a smooth election in Waterville, so thank you, Patty, thank you to everyone involved there, great job. We appreciate it. I'd like to remind everyone again, we are putting out a call for volunteers to assist in staffing our city warming center in the event of emergencies or widespread power outages over the winter. If you're interested in being trained as a volunteer, please reach out to administration or the fire department, we're happy to have you, would love to have some more volunteers, our ranks have been a little bit thinned this year, so if you are interested in helping out here, please let us know. Lastly, I just want to, again, remind you to please sign up for our city mass notification system, waterville-me dot myfreearts dot com, lots of great info and updates you can get there. Lastly, I just want to turn it over to Joe for a few minutes, he's been doing a review of our city website, and some updates and content there, and some ideas, and maybe some future functions, so he took a deep dive on our website the past couple weeks, I just want to invite him up for a second to give a rundown, Joe.
Excellent, thanks, Brian, and good to see everyone, good evening, and happy post-election day. So from my side, as Brian mentioned, we've been working on a range of very interesting projects over the past few weeks, I'm lucky enough to have been able to do my part with it, and one I really am excited to share about today is our website review and update process. So basically what I did was I took a deep dive on our website, went through all the pages, mapped out all the text, mapped out all the links, all the pictures, all of that, and then went back through and edited, found dead links, found pieces that were missing, and tried to go through and clean as much of that up as possible. We're all the way through it at this point, with a few minor exceptions, where I'm still waiting for Civic Plus to get back to me on, but we'll get there in due course, I'm sure. Basically, what we were aiming for here was, sort of on one level, to try and clean up the site, but also to spruce it up a bit, make the language a little more dynamic, a little bit clearer, making it easier for people to access different elements of the site. In the longer run, once we complete this first comb through with Civic Plus's input, I'm excited to go back through and do a second run, where we're looking at trying to bring in even more interesting and engaging content, trying to make the site more lively, again, not just putting in, you know, additional elements for the sake of it, but trying to make the website even more accessible for people, and make it easier for you to find where you're trying to go. So we're very excited about that, and eager to, to get going, probably in the next week or so, on that element of the process. Yes?
Yeah, is there any plan or possibility for having pages dedicated to the various committee work that the council engages in?
That certainly is possible, yes, we have the capability to do that.
Where minimally minutes, agendas and minutes would be able to be archived, and perhaps, like, you know, a list of the membership or whatever, that kind of thing?
Yep, so we absolutely can do that. Great.
That's great news, Joe, thank you for doing that, it's really important. I'm just, I actually had a question about the call for volunteers, and if there was someone specific that should be addressed, should be contacted, or a number, it would be great to get that on the website, so that it's easy for people to...
Agreed, so probably, probably Teresa at the fire department is the best person, and we can actually, we can get this up on the website, just basically the call for volunteers, and also the relevant contact info, so...
Awesome, consider it done.
Thank you.
The last thing on the website, and I know you want to mention also, just, we are also working with the age-friendly group to get some content up there for them, and then there's also going to be a housing piece that we're working on also, so...
Thank you, Brad. Yes.
And language access to?
So currently, our system works with a translation function, but our goal in the second push-through is to try and find a way to make that even easier. I actually have to credit the mayor, when he stopped by my office the other day, we ran through that functionality together.
Yeah, I sent Joel something this morning, this afternoon, I was looking at, you know, for Winslow's election results, and on the top of their page, they have a thing where it does exactly, translated by Google, very much similar to what we did in your office, but it was right there at the top, so you could switch and made it, and switch back, and I did it to a couple different things, and it was very smooth, so, yeah.
Yeah, well, certainly, anything that improves accessibility like that, we would definitely be open to, so I'm happy to look into that further.
Yeah, awesome. Great.
Wonderful.
Thank you, Joe. All right. Was that, was that your question?
Yeah.
Awesome. All right, moving on to council comments or committee reports. Any councillors have any comments this evening? Any committee reports? Councillor Green?
Yeah, I just wanted to announce that there's going to be a community potluck next, a week from Friday, November 15th, from 4:00 to 6:00, at the Children's Discovery Museum in Waterville. This is hosted by MidMaine Adult Education and it, and other partners, Waterville Creates, Children's Discovery Museum, Colby Arts, and the Waterville Alternative High School, and this is kind of follow-up on the Together Project that we hosted last year in the city, and also a very popular Syrian dinner that was held at the high school last year. But this is open to everyone in the community, we are asking that you are SVP, it's a true potluck, but we'd like to know who's coming, so you can go to midmaine dot mainadulted.org to register, and please bring your friends, it's going to be a great event. I have one other item, this morning I was on a call with the Affordable Housing Task Force, and there was a presentation on a new eviction prevention program that is being run through Main State Housing, and I just wanted to highlight that, it's, it's a great program that is going to help people who are falling behind in their rent, and help prevent them from becoming, from being evicted. And so you can go to mainhousing.org to find out more about that, and I see that Michelle Prince is here, I'm, I'm just wondering if, if there's going to be support from KV cap, if people need it for this program?
So we certainly have...
I'm sorry, Michelle, I should call you out.
So we do have a resource navigator, and we have a housing councillor, if folks were having difficulty doing that application on their own, the application is meant to be done by anyone who needs that assistance. The program itself is being administered by Quality Housing Coalition, they're out of Portland, so they are administering it for the whole state, and they would be the ones that folks would reach out to if they were having some kind of issue, but certainly as, we're working with people, if they're having some issues, we can try to help them, get connected.
All right, thank you.
Awesome. Awesome?
Yep, I'm good.
Okay, any others? Councillor Kleebag?
So, first off, just an announcement, we had the Quarry Road Ski Swap last Saturday, it was actually a surprising success, given how chilly it was, it was kind of a chilly day, but most of it was held inside the snowmaking shed. I don't know the exact number, but I think we grossed around $5,500 bucks, which is, yeah, higher, I think it might be one of the highest yields that we've had gross, and about 40% less than that after consignment was paid out. So that was, that was a great event and fundraiser for the, to support programming for young kids out there at Quarry Road. So thank you to any community members that came out for that really fun event, and think about it next year, it's a great way to get out in the winter. And then I have a couple committee reports, the, the first is actually the Friends of Quarry Road Committee meeting that happened on October 24th, right after the tow rope cutting event that the city manager talked about. I unfortunately wasn't able to be there, because it was at the same time as the Resiliency Committee, which I'm also on, but I do have a few of the highlights, they talked about the grant and fundraising status of a half dozen different grants that they have through a range of funding agencies, they also talked about coordination with Ken Walsh, a meeting that they had with Ken from the AYCC, they talked about establishing a volunteer coordinator, coordinator position, which they've been, they, they have a volunteer coordinator, but they want to get a stipend, and they made some recommendations for who that might be. And then there was discussion of the MOU between the city and the Friends, in support of the Phase One project management for, for the upgrades that are happening there. All right, and there was, yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to leave it there, because I wasn't actually, I wasn't actually at this meeting. The meeting I was at was the one I was chairing, which was the Resiliency Committee meeting, and those minutes are right here. Right, so, yeah, we had, oh, this is September, darn it, come on. Here we go, is this the right one? Yeah, October 24th. So, the new Community Action Grant was released for $75,000, that's an increase from, of $20,000 from the last funding round. And John Gardner, who was an engineer, lives in Winslow, but he's been coming to the meeting, a retired faculty and engineer, he distributed this really amazing analysis of the annex and the North Street Pool Building, thinking about solar potential there. He's, he's done a pretty excellent cost-benefit analysis of rooftop solar potential across the city, and he was able to get a copy of the city's electric bills, and, yeah, he basically went through the nuances of that, so, yeah, that, that was a really helpful thing, because it gives us a target for, for new grant funding projects, which is what we've been diligently working towards, is getting a list of, of, of funding targets that we can match with different opportunities. We talked about the potential out at the LaFleur Airport. And then Randy was there, he, from the airport, he talked about the, the work that they'd been doing there for modernization and sustainability, like heat and cooling upgrades, et cetera. Yeah, we discussed the, the Community Action Grant, different possibilities with that. Also, we had more talk about the Renew America Schools Grant, but the, the school board, the superintendent had indicated that he was unable to find a partner for us, so I'm not sure if that is going to be something we go forward with. We talked about the EEPG Grant, yeah, Michael met with, Michael met with a representative from the company, that's going to be the contractor Ikea, they're trying to schedule a walkthrough of both the police station and City Hall, once that, that's done, they'll sign a contract, and Brian's trying to get them to install better-looking, more traditional light fixtures for City Hall, so we'll keep you posted on the outcome of that. Yeah, and then we went through and formally ratified the Resiliency Sustainability Statement, that's in the agenda tonight, we'll talk about that when that gets here. Next meeting is on Thursday, November 21st, we had a member step down, Claire Panicki had to step down, so there's lots of chairs in that room, the Michael Roy Room, for people who want to contribute. It is volunteers that make a community functional, so if you have time and bandwidth and interest, please come to the Resiliency and Sustainability Committee. That is all I have, thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Any other councillors have any, any comments? Steven? All right, I'm going to turn it over to our youth council, give us an update as to what we've got going, or what we've been up to. Ladies, if you want to introduce yourself, and relax, I'll let you go.
My name is Finley Grubbs.
I'm Macallan Grubbs.
I'm Macallan Grubbs.
You want to go first? You go first.
So the most recent thing that we kind of worked on was the Nightmare on Main Street, we had a car for that, and we brought candy, and just helped out there. We are working on figuring out kind of a direction we want to go overall for the kind of year that we're going together. We have kind of plans for, we've been talking about wanting to have, like, political education type stuff for youth, and how that's important to a lot of us, and like, youth involvement, and kind of how we can get more of our community involved with what we're doing.
What ideas did you have?
Let me get out some of our notes. Do you want to say anything else that you...
You're stealing my things.
I'm stealing all of your things? Okay.
If you can't find your notes, that's okay, I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
No, you're okay.
Finley worked the election yesterday.
Oh, yeah.
All day, so it was like a 20-hour day for her, too.
So it was like a 20-hour day for her, too.
Woo! So some of the ideas from some of our members were, we were talking about like public transportation and getting that kind of out there because there is a lot of people who can't do as much as they want to because of a lack of public transportation. We were talking about kind of hosting like a cleanup and like talking about more about like community development and we, we are still like in the ideas, like planning phase and we are trying to kind of figure out how to mesh a lot of our ideas because a lot of our members want to focus on different things. So we're still working on putting our heads together, still a newer thing.
You can do it.
Awesome. Well, thank you very much. We appreciate the update. All right. Moving on to any, I'm sorry, we're good, right? I know where the comments. Yeah, thank you. All right, moving on to public comments. Anyone in the public wish to have any comments this evening? Anyone online? Patty?
No. Could I have just one moment?
You most certainly can.
I thank you for the, you know, the kind words about the election, but I think it's important to note that, you know, obviously I need a lot of help to run a successful election. So I would just like to mention that the staff at City Hall did a lot of extra work. Linda Cody, Kelly, Emily pulled more than their fair share. We've had two new hires within the last two weeks that kind of got thrown into the fire and they've done a great job. M and D. We had a huge staff here at the Annex doing early voting. Deb, Kathy, Christie, Marilyn, Pam, Kathy, Ann, Harriet and Tim, Jim and Vicky, Yvette, John Kaye. So I had to train and staff over here. That was a huge help, took some of the heat off us at City Hall. I really feel like it's important to mention the help of police and fire, their support, Thomas College Security and making sure that we had a secure voting area for the voters and the election staff. So I really do appreciate all that help. We had 30 helpers who helped on Saturday, who processed about 3,700 absentee ballots in about eight or nine hours over the weekend. So that was another huge undertaking. And staff on Election Day, Ronalyn and Joanne Halley have been helping out with elections for about 40 years. They're experts, they're fantastic, and I am so thankful that they're still willing to help out and they have more energy than almost everyone there. Also Roger, John, Tim, Matt, Heather and Rian headed up different areas within the polling place and, and they're all very valuable and I appreciate their help. And many election clerks, some of, some were very new. Deputy registrars, we registered almost 900 people on Election Day, very, very busy. And we also had around 15 or so students from the high school. Finley was one. The students are, they do a great job. They're enthusiastic, they're happy to help. And I, I took every election worker from the school that offered and came forward because I think once they get involved, they're hooked. And Finley's worked several elections already and this is our, you know, our future. So I, I'm thankful for that. I also had about 10 college students help out as well. So I just want to make sure to recognize everyone that helped out and it's really, really appreciated.
Awesome. Thank you. All right. Moving on to consent agenda, can I make a, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Okay. And can I get a motion?
Motion rebuttal.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Everybody's favorite.
Right? All right. Moving on to Resolution 207, 2024.
Authorize the issuance of a short-term rental license to Joseph Van Deventer, doing business as Living Light Properties, 30 Bowtown Avenue.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Okay. Is, is Joseph here? Don't see him. Okay.
He's got three of them here. What are they, short-term rentals? They're not B2Bs, they're the next level up or?
No, that's Airbnb.
Airbnb?
Yeah.
Oh.
Any discussion, comments?
I appreciate that Joseph applied and paid the fees. I personally am opposed to Airbnbs, but I appreciate someone following the law and doing the correct thing.
Excellent. Okay. All those in favor? Wonderful. Moving on to Resolution 208, 2024.
Authorize the issuance of a short-term rental license to Joseph Van Deventer, doing business as Living Light Properties, 34 Western Avenue.
Move to adopt.
Sorry, I just want to, if we can go back, I don't, I don't know if the entire council was, I think we may have had one in opposition to that. We didn't call for the nays.
I can't see through the podium there, so. Okay, thank you. So five in favor and one opposed. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Brian. Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to Resolution 209, 2024.
Authorize the issuance of a short-term rental license to Joseph Van Deventer, doing business as Living Light Properties, 8 Pleasant Court.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? See none. All those in favor? And opposed. Thank you. All right. Moving on to Resolution 210, 2024.
Refer to the Planning Board, Zoning Ordinance Amendments, Rural Residential Zone.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Okay. If I believe, Ann, this was something that you threw up there, right? Like you wanted to speak to this real quick?
There's a gentleman who is redeveloping a property on West River Road, 959, I believe it is, West River Road, and he'd like to add a dwelling unit above the garage, but he doesn't have the setback that, that he needs to do that. And so he's requested that, but this would apply to all properties in the rural residential zone. So it has the potential to increase housing in that zone because it decreases the amount of setback, makes more land available, gives developers the option of siting their building in slightly different locations that can avoid wetlands, steep slopes, ledge, that sort of thing, and perhaps put a driveway in a better location.
Okay. All right. Any questions from the council? Councilor Finch?
What's the current rationale for having a 50-foot setback in the rural residential? Does it have to do with the, just less traffic? It's not in the city? There's faster, the roads have faster speed limits? Anything like that?
No. My guess is that this has been in place since at least 1971 and I think it's just a matter of, this is a rural area and it has been farms in the past and the farm houses tended to be farther back from the road than in the urban area. So, so this doesn't require anybody to move their house forward or place a new house forward. It just allows them the ability to do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Any comments from the public? Anyone online, Patty? Seeing none. Okay. All those in favor? Any opposed? No. All right. Moving on to Resolution 211, 2024.
Acceptance of a bid for a gear washer and dryer to Daniel's Equipment Company Incorporated.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? Chief's here. You want to, you want to talk about your findings?
Absolutely.
I know you came to us before to put it out to bid and?
Yeah. We put it out to bid. As you can see, I put on the memo, we received five bids. Daniel's did two of them, Bergeron did two, IPS did, did one also. We had the opportunity to see this Daniel's Equipment in action, which I, I did not know, I'd never dealt with them before. They deal in, they deal in big industrial-sized washing machines and dryers, so this is what these guys do every day. So they, they have a good crew. They have a lot of this stuff in-house right now that they'll be able to get to us pretty quickly, help us set it up. So we, we felt that the extra money for the cloud-based system right now was not worth it, so we went with the bid for $30,332.
Okay. Excellent. Any questions? Councilor Green?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, I really like the way this memo is written with all of the information. It's really helpful for us to, to see, you know, what the bids are, what the process was, and so thank you.
I'm going to remember that. Thank you.
All right. Councilor Finch?
So what is the reason why IPS came in significantly lower? Like it looks like on one option Bergeron and Daniel's are about, you know, they're within, you know, 2,000 of each other, but then IPS is just significantly, significantly lower. What's the, why is the bid significantly lower? Like, do you know, is it the matter of equipment or?
I wish I could tell you. I got one page from them with no information on it, just a price. That's not what we asked for in the bid. We actually had a bid sheet that we wanted filled out with information. Gear washers for fire department equipment is very specific and it needs to follow NFPA rules. I don't know what this thing was. And when we ask for bids and we ask for certain things, we'd like to see that on there. I mean, it takes a lot of time to call these people and track them down. Daniel's and Bergeron gave us everything we were looking for. Bergeron's a good company. They just were a little bit more expensive and, and Daniel's seemed like they were good company to go with, so. As far as IPS, I, I couldn't tell you because they didn't give us any information, just a price.
Thanks.
How long will it take you to get the equipment?
He claims four to five weeks.
Hmm, okay.
Which in this day and age is really fast for anything in the fight bar.
Yeah, it's not bad at all.
Yeah.
Awesome. All right. Moving on. All those in favor? Opposed? None? All right. Moving on to Resolution 212, 2024.
Acceptance of a bid for an ambulance remount.
Move to adopt.
Second.
All right. Chief? Yeah, I mean, we, we talked about this before, but again, we, now we've come back with some bids and?
Yes, so this was a bond that we received through the city for $270,500. As you can see, we got one person to bid, Autotronics out of Bangor. He did bid three different options to us. You can see that on the memo. We are asking to go with the option number one, which is the remount of our ambulance. The other option two is a remount of an ambulance that he has up there. He would remount that one. We would keep our ambulance in-house and keep it running until the day that it was done and then we would trade our ambulance in. So we would not be down in ambulance in the meantime. And option three is a brand-new ambulance. I like brand-new ambulances, but I believe being fiscally responsible, it's, we, we can remount our ambulance. It's never been remounted and it has the ability to be remounted. So looking at, money is looking at cost, we decided that option one was definitely the way to go. And that's, I mean, that's the only bid we got for a remount, so. It's, it's tough. When you go to remount something, we, my gosh, we sent it out, we, obviously we did it the way we're supposed to, put it out on the website, put it in the newspaper. We sent it out to five or six different companies that we know of that are in New England. And because it's a PL custom, you know, you take like, there's a company out of Auburn, they, they don't want anything to do with it. They don't deal with PL customs, they deal with Roadmasters and they don't want to remount a PL custom. So they don't even, they don't even bid. Autotronics is somebody that we deal with or have dealt with on all of our ambulances. They treat us pretty well. When we need a loner, because something's broken, he, he does not hesitate to send us an ambulance. So I believe that he'll treat us well. I mean, looking at the price, we were hoping it would be at the, you know, what we got for a bond, but things, things are crazy. And on top of that, they tell us that every year, the price of a remount or the price of a new ambulance is going up by 15 to 20%. So, you know, next year, this will be 15 to 20% higher. So we're looking to spend the entire bond, as you can see, and we're also looking to take out, you know, $22,610 from our fire department cost recovery account to cover the rest of it. Does everybody know what a power load stretcher, power load cotton stretcher is? You got to have them nowadays. You know, our ambulances, not to continue to ramble on, but I'm pretty proud of our people, so. We run almost 6,000 calls a year. 80% of those are EMS calls. So if you take our two frontline ambulances, because we run two full-time ambulances right now, those ambulances run, let's just say, around 24 to 2,500 calls apiece. That's a lot of calls. So if you take those people that are in those ambulances for 24-hour shift and they're running, you know, upwards of 15 calls a day, if you can imagine every time you have, if you had to manually lift a stretcher, lift it, put it in the back of the truck, I mean, that's a lot of wear and tear on your body. We have a high, high rate of shoulder injuries, back injuries and knee injuries. Power load stretchers are, you know, a big arm comes out of the truck, the stretcher goes onto that arm, you push a button and you just let it do its thing, loads it by itself. It is the standard industry now. In fact, you have a really hard time even buying a regular stretcher anymore. This stretcher in this remount will give all three of our frontline ambulances a power load. We do not have a power load in our backup or transfer rig right now. That is a regular stretcher in there. But the problem with the power load is I can't take the power load out of one ambulance and put it in the other one if an ambulance goes down because all the hardware has to go with it. So it's like a four-day process, so. And it costs a lot of money. So we are really looking to outfit this ambulance with a power load stretcher and ca it, and then we will have all of our frontline ambulances, we'll have them in there.
Perfect. Councilor Kleeback?
What will be the downtime while the remount happens?
So this estimated delivery date of our, if we sent it out like tomorrow, estimated delivery date is November 1st of 2025. They basically take the ambulance box off and they slide a brand-new F450 chassis underneath of it, put our box back on it, update the HVAC system, polish up the lights, paint what needs to be painted, they put a new floor in it. They do have to upgrade the floor because of the power load stretcher, fix anything that's broken inside of it, test everything, and they also give us a brand-new inverter, which is, we, we need to have. In today's standards, the HVAC system is the big deal and you need a lot of power to run that HVAC system. With COVID, everything was about moving air. And you can imagine sitting in the back of a little box with somebody who was very sick, you, you want the airflow to be moving around pretty quickly, so this will upgrade that airflow also.
And, and how, how will you fill that gap with a year?
So we do have a fourth backup ambulance in the basement, just for this purpose.
I got you.
Because these ambulances are on the road so often and right now, we do have a brand-new ambulance that your folks allowed us to get, you know, two years ago, which we finally took delivery of. But these ambulances are, one's a 2012, one's a 2008. They're showing their age. They go down a lot. So when we had the opportunity, we, we were able to get a fourth one and put it in the basement and for this, we'll pull it up, put it on the floor and we'll run it in the meantime.
Okay. But you won't have that reserve capacity?
We will not have that reserve capacity. That's correct. So if something goes down in the meantime, we're going to have to deal with it.
Your buddy up there, Automatronics is going to help you.
And he very well might. If we called a bump and said, hey, look, we're in a pinch here, you know, we got, we got a big problem going on, he'd help us out. I know he would.
Yeah.
Yep.
Awesome. Great. Any other questions for the chief? All right. Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? None? Seeing none?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, chief.
And I, if I could real quickly, I want to say, I watched Patty and her crew in action yesterday. I spent the whole day up there with them. It's amazing.
Right.
They're, they're amazing. I've, it's, it kind of blew my mind. I'd never really been that involved with it and hats off to you, Patty. Nice work.
Awesome. All right. Moving on. Awesome. All right, moving on to Resolution 2013, 2024.
Support the resiliency and sustainability statement for the City of Waterville.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Okay. Tom, you wanna introduce this?
Yeah.
Please.
So as Chair of the Resiliency and Sustainability Committee, I led a discussion about, you know, the importance of having a conceptual touchstone for the committee and for the city at large around the issue of sustainability and resilience. And this is because it should not come as a shock to people. Things go up and things go down. There will be tough times in our future. There is a changing climate, and the impacts of that changing climate are felt globally and locally, right here in Waterville. You can see that in any number of ways. So the goal of the committee is to be as, to anticipate those problems as much as we possibly can, and to move to ward against them, prophylactically prepare ourselves to be more resilient in the face of crises. We see communities all across the United States right now in the state of crisis. There are over 100 communities in the United States at the moment who are currently, have active disasters declared with some, somewhere in the stage of FEMA intervention. And some of those communities are in New England. There's certainly every possibility that this could be one of those communities at some point in the future. We're parked right on the banks of one of the largest rivers in New England. And not just on the bank of the river, we're at the confluence of three distinct watersheds, the bulk of the Kennebec River Valley, as long with the Sebastian Hook and the Meselonsky. The Meselonsky, as small as it may seem, actually represents a pretty large watershed in the Bell Grays. And, you know, extreme storm event in terms of flooding is not the only kind of environmental impacts that we can expect. We can expect, I mean, I biked here tonight in a short-sleeved t-shirt, feeling utterly comfortable. And it's, it's what, November 6th? That's weird. That's very weird. It's warmer, I moved here in 2014. It's warmer tonight, here on November 6th, than it used to be in the winters, when I, in the, in the summers at night, when I first moved here. It would be nice and chilly, even in August, when I first moved to Waterville. So extreme heat events is something that mayors may not be prepared for, particularly for disruptions that it can bring to schooling for our children, and impacts to the most vulnerable people in our community, such as the unhoused or the elderly, people on fixed income with little capacity to, to protect themselves from extreme impacts of climate. So, yeah, I personally am committed to notions of sustainability, resilience, other virtues like patience and compassion, equity, justice. These are not, you know, the day after Camp, Election Day, these are not campaign platitudes. It's a worldview that I invite my neighbors to embrace beyond any notion of political divide. Because when storms, when crisis hits a community, it is not about red, blue, black, white, green, or any color. It's about, it's about us. It's about all of us trying to survive. And so I'm just one man, and I'm in a volunteer position. All of us are volunteers up here. As I said earlier tonight, a strong community is made of the fruits of volunteer labor, of people in a community coming together, caring for one another, and trying to work their best to use the talents that they have in their community to prepare us to be resilient in the face of disaster. So with that in mind, we drafted this. I'm not gonna read the whole thing to you right now. I'm going to take Joe at his word and make sure that this statement is on the city's website in a resiliency committee page, so that the members of our community can review it and understand how it's, I plan to have this as a guiding light for the continued actions of the resiliency committee. As you read it, you'll notice that, in particular, I talk quite a bit about the most, the most vulnerable, making sure that the most vulnerable amongst us, children, the elderly, the unhoused, low-income individuals and families, who can be disproportionately affected by these climate-related risks, are taken into explicit consideration in the actions that the resiliency committee and, as much as my capacity, the rest of city council and the city government will, will take towards this issue. So I also, I also talk about the, I affirm that the various ecosystems that we have, our green space, our wetlands, our rivers and waterways, that are delivering critical ecosystem services to us, have an intrinsic right to exist and flourish. And so I hope that all of my counselors will join me in ratifying this statement and using this statement as a touchstone that will guide our actions in the future. And it can be something that can help make our community stronger in the, in the face of disaster that will come, maybe not in our lifetimes or potentially tomorrow. So I guess, I guess that's all I have to say for now.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, listen, it's a great document. A lot of, a lot of effort went into this document. I could, you know, I could tell. And from the committee, and it's, again, it is doing very specific work. And I appreciate all the efforts that you and the other members are doing. So what we're looking, like, what you're looking now for is just, again, this document for the, for the city, just to recognize the work, and that's gonna happen, and...
Ratifying the language.
Perfect.
Give me a thumbs up, and I'll, and I'll keep working.
Okay. All right. All those in favor? All right. Any opposed? Nobody's opposed. Thumbs up. Continue the work, my friend. All right, moving on to Resolution 2014, 2024.
Accept the final report of the Waterville Housing Committee.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Okay. Counsel Green?
Thank you. I just want to thank the Housing Committee again for the work that went into this document. Three years of meeting and discussing and considering the complex issues involved in housing, particularly in Waterville. I had the opportunity to meet with Brian and Michael and Joe and just talk through some of the elements that are in here. And I feel very encouraged that we're going to come up with a strategic working plan that's going to carry these, these ideas and initiatives forward. One of the ideas that we talked about was a yearly housing symposium, which I think would be a wonderful thing, building on the conference we had in 2020...
One.
One? Yeah. And as, as well as other, you know, exploring other initiatives around zoning, around new funding opportunities. The energy around grants is, is great. There are lots of different things we can do. And this document is available in, in the, in the agenda packet. I hope that it'll be on the website, too, so that people can read it. It really is looking at housing in all parts of the city. So there are also recommendations for, you know, more building of larger homes in the rural residential district as well, all income levels, all wards. So, again, thank you to the committee and to the city staff for picking this up. And it's another issue that definitely affects the most vulnerable in our community. And addressing this issue will allow us all to thrive in Waterville. So, thank you.
Excellent.
Mr. Mayor, just to, just to add on to that, just to let everyone know, we had a great meeting with Counsel Green, but did also have a follow-up meeting with Joe, as well as Michael, to talk about how we pushed this along. So, you know, we intend to take action on a number of these items, you know, where possible. The symposium you mentioned is gonna be a great idea. We're looking at maybe in the spring, organizing something here to keep this issue alive and update the public and community partners on our progress. So we took a deeper dive into this. We're putting together that, that action plan, and we intend to, you know, to, to continue the work here, for sure. So, again, I just want to say thank you to all the great work to the Housing Committee, Counsel Green, others. And it is in the hands of city staff now to carry this forward, and we're excited to do it. We have some great people involved now, and so I'm excited for the future here. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Any comments from counsel? Any comments from public? All right, seeing none. All those in favor? Only opposed? None opposed? All right. Moving on to Order 2015, 2024.
Designation of King Street Apartments Affordable Housing Development and Tax Increment Financing District.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Okay.
Was there a second?
A second.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, any, Brian, you wanna kick us off with this one, or just to, I mean, I guess?
Yeah, I think this is just, basically going back to Phil's comments at the beginning.
Yeah.
This is just the actual item. I don't know if Phil has anything else to add at this point, but I think you heard his general overview at the beginning of the evening. We also have some folks here from KV Cap. I see Dave Pelton here. If they have anything else in particular they wanna, they wanna add also.
Anyone? Dave?
Yeah. So thank you for considering this tonight. I'm Dave Pelton, Director of Real Estate with KV Cap. So the town attorney did a great job of explaining the what of the TIF. I thought maybe I could just give a few words on the why of the TIF. We, there are basically two major pieces to a development. There's the construction side and figuring out how to fund the construction side, and it's especially difficult with affordable housing, because we're, we're putting out there that we're gonna charge below-market-rate rents. So you can't just go to a bank and say, you know, give us the money. By the way, we're not gonna charge full rent. The banks tend to put their money somewhere else. So we go, we work with Main Housing, and they have some great programs for affordable housing projects. So the building it is, is the first part, but then KV Cap signs on to operate that building for 40 years. So we have a long-term interest in it. So this TIF helps us in the first 25 of those years with the operations side of it, because we are, as I said, offering these apartments at below-market rate. So that's really the, sort of, the why. This comes before you.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any counsel comments? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? All right. Moving on to Ordinance 2016, 2024.
Amend the zoning ordinance, decrease residential B dimensional requirements.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Yeah, Ian, you wanna talk about this one real quick?
Did you have particular questions, or would you, let me just give you an overview? Okay. So the, the idea of this ordinance is to potentially increase housing. Decreasing the dimensional requirements in the residential B zone will allow for two more dwelling units per acre. So we're talking about decreasing the road frontage, which will decrease the cost of construction and decrease the cost to the city to maintain new roads, because there're not as much road frontage as necessary, given that we're, we're talking about decreasing the frontage from 100 feet per unit to 85 feet.
Okay. Any other questions, concerns, comments?
Concern. I've already got what sounds like this in Ward 7 in the South End, and has already got a parking issue. That is...
I'm sorry. It's, the South End is almost entirely residential C zone, so this is only the residential Bs.
I'm just saying that it's, upfront, it sounds good. Down the road, 10 years, 15 years, when contractors have got, or landlords have gotten into it, or out-of-state property owners have gotten into it and decided to broaden whatever, and, well, where are you gonna put this other person? Well, they can park out on the street. That begins, it begins to mirror something to me, because I know that a lot of the frontages where I have now are the 8500. And I just, a concern. Down the road, it's gonna be something that is going to consider.
Counsel Green?
So I was reading the minutes of the planning board where this was discussed, and it did sound like there was some concern on the planning board, and it was, the vote was 5-2. I do think it's a good thing to try. I'm just wondering if, you know, what it, I think the concern was similar to, not regarding parking, but just what effect this would have in, in the future. Or, so maybe you can comment on what the concern was? Just, I'm just interested in hearing that. And also, how this compares to residential C? I didn't get a chance to go and compare, but is this bringing residential B into a kind of parity with residential C, or?
No.
No?
The resident, the proposal is for the residential B zones to have more road frontage than in residential C. And as in most of the city, the zoning was put into place after. A lot of the development had already occurred. So much of the South End has lots that are smaller than the residential C requires. So many, many of the lots are legal non-conforming.
Following up on Counsel Green's question, what percentage of residential B is likely to be impacted by this?
Well, the idea is the whole zone would be impacted, but it would be the, it would make some lots legal, that are now legal non-conforming, meaning that there are lots that were created before 1971, when this was put into place.
The 100 feet.
Pardon me?
The 100 feet.
Right. And the residential B zone itself. So they're smaller than what's required. And so legally, anyone can put a single-family home on them, as long as they're 5,000 square feet. But it decreases the amount of space that can be developed for multifamily housing. There, there are several lots where developers would like to divide their lots into, say, three units, and they can only get two. So it will, it will encourage people to build more units, and especially in the, the developed area where the utilities already exist. So it would encourage infill development. And then out in the, the larger lots, we could see new subdivisions with... we could see new subdivisions with smaller lots, more units, and also in multifamily housing that would allow, as I said, two more units per acre. And to the counselor's point, we do require parking for new development. So it's a slightly different situation than what we see in the South End right now. When I say parking, I mean onsite parking, not street parking.
Is there residential B that is currently non-buildable that would become buildable?
There may be some very, very few units, but legal non-conforming lots can be as small as 5,000 square feet. So it's mostly people wanting to divide the lots to create more units than they can now. Not that they, they're not developable, but they can be developed for more units than just one. We have three planning board members here tonight, if you want to hear from any of them. And you asked about what concerns there were on the planning board. Tom Nail, I think, I think all he said was that he wanted to maybe know more about how much land is developable in our residential B zone. And the other counselor who didn't vote in favor of this was Heath Dunn, and I don't believe he said why he didn't support it. But the planning board chairman is here. He's not jumping out, Sam.
All right. Any further questions?
Again, I'm apprehensive. You're starting to shoehorn people with the reduction. I respect people wanting to be able to divide their lot, put more stuff in. I'm just looking down the road, in the South End, the majority of those properties were single-family homes. Granted, they got developed. And I've run into more than one property owner, oh, I can put another apartment up in the attic. Okay, you put them up in the attic, where are you going to put their parking? Oh, they can park on the street. With this now, in 25 years, there's going to be a landlord going, oh, I can put them out on the street. It isn't going to happen today. It isn't going to happen tomorrow. But 10 years, 15 years, we're going to run into another. I'm just apprehensive that not happening.
So to answer that question, though, in order for them to redevelop another apartment, they would have to have an off-street parking because that's what it says in the ordinance. I would also just sort of say to the council that one of the strategies for helping to bring in affordable housing is to allow people to develop more units and offset the cost amongst multiple units on an area. So if we are looking to develop more affordable housing and solve some of the issues that we're seeing with not having enough rentals and not having enough housing in the city, this is a very great and effective way to do so. And it helps to disperse the costs, not only for property owners, but also for the city on a smaller part of land. So I would just note that as well.
I appreciate that point, Sam. I think the other, you know, I'm going to vote for it. I think the other question here is, we want affordable, we want the right amount of affordable housing. And I think that we also want to encourage, at least this is what the Housing Committee recommended, homeownership, so smaller homes that can be owned because we have a lot of rental housing. So I'm, you know, I think with any zoning change, it's good to think carefully about the impact it'll have. It's hard to know. But I'm, you know, I think this is the kind of thing we need to do in order to provide a variety of different tools for developers to create more housing in the city. So, thank you.
All right. With that, this, what, this requires two votes. All those in favor?
Apprehensively. I'm going to talk to Mr. Dunn.
All right, excellent, thank you. Okay, with that, we are now going to move into executive session. There is a, we are going to come back out potentially and take a vote on a land violation issue. But we, I would entertain a motion to consult with legal counsel for one MRS 4056E.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Everybody, I would like to entertain, we need to entertain a motion to come back from executive session.
So moved.
Second.
And all those in favor? Thank you. Now I would like to entertain a motion to waive closure for Resolution 2017-2024.
So moved.
Second.
And this, you want to read this?
All those in favor of waiving closure? Thank you. Would you like me to read this in full?
Yeah.
Can you read it by title only?
Yeah, let's do that.
Read it in full. Authorization for settlement of land use violation complaint against Six Main Place Venture LLC. Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Waterville, acting as municipal officers as follows: That the City Council authorizes the City Manager to execute a settlement of the land use violation complaint against Six Main Place Venture LLC for judgment in the amount of $12,000, including the city's legal fees. The settlement documents are subject to review and approval by the city solicitor. Is there a motion?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none? Wonderful, thank you. May I get a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, everybody, have a great week.